Indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for the opportunity to be here as councilman and to serve the city of Riverton. Father, we're thankful for many blessings that this country affords us. We would ask that thou would bless us with wisdom and that we might do the best we very can for the citizens of Riverton, bless and watch over them. We're thankful for the moisture which thou hast recently blessed us with, and we say this humbly: Name thy Son, Jesus Christ; amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Would the city clerk please conduct the roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Martin Canaan.
Here.
Councilman Lee Martinez.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilman Sean Peterson.
Here.
Councilwoman Holly Jivin.
Here.
Mayor John Lars Baker.
I am here and declare that we have a quorum. The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda with the addition of Resolution Number 1331 to be placed after item number 13.
Motion to approve the agenda, including item 1331 to be added to the agenda.
Seconded.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say same. Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Communication from the floor. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the city council regarding an item that's already on the agenda will be given an opportunity to speak later on. Ask those individuals who wish to address the council at this time to approach the podium, identify yourselves for the record. Would the city clerk please read the consent agenda, items by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, approval of the minutes, January 19th, 2016, regular council meeting, approval of the minutes, January 26th, 2016, goal-setting retreat, approval of the minutes, February 2nd, 2016, finance committee meeting, approval of finance committee recommendations for February 2nd, 2016, and replant of Lot 2, Wind River Industrial Park, R.J. Mallory, petitioner.
Are there any items that require further discussion?
Your Honor.
Go ahead.
Finance committee recommendations of claims to be paid in the amount of $141,852.32, payroll liabilities for one twenty-two of 2016 in the amount of $359,377.70, for a total to be paid in the amount of $501,230.20.
The chair would entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Your Honor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye and the motion passes. Next item of business is the Riverton Police Department Citizens Awards. Chief of Police, report please.
Thank you, Your Honor. As we do on occasion, we like to recognize some of the citizens of our community that do an outstanding job of either, you know, furthering the goals of our community out in the public spaces or directly help the police department in some way. And so we have a couple of folks we'd like to recognize tonight. Really, you know, I just have a certificate for them, which is not much, but it really is the public recognition of what they do that I think is important. And so I'd like to invite Mike Perazou up, if you would. Last May, you know, we had a terrible tragedy in our community. Sophia Archer was killed while crossing the street on Sunset, and Mike was there, and he had stopped to allow the girls to cross the street, and Sophia was with her sister Lillian. And Mike saw that a vehicle was traveling westbound, just wasn't going to get stopped. And so he was pretty helpless to try to fix this as it's happening in real speed. So he started yelling at the girls to stop, and Lillian heard him and turned and looked at him. And about then is when the vehicle struck Sophia and killed her. And so really, Mike saved Lillian's life, and we just wanted to give him some recognition for that. As painful as that was for us as a community, imagine Mike's pain that he had to watch, you know, what happened. But truly, what we're here to see is the silver lining in that is that we didn't have a double tragedy that day, that Lillian's life was saved, and I think it was a direct result of Mike's actions. So we just have a certificate for him, but mostly we would just like to publicly say thank you to him and, you know, step up and try to help out. So Mike, thank you very much.
Photo, photo on.
Thanks, Your Honor. The other person we'd like to recognize tonight is Shirley Morris. Shirley, would you come up? Shirley is the Asset Protection Manager at Walmart, and she calls us on a regular basis to come help her, but she is way more help to us than we are to her. We bother Shirley, I think, every single day. And sometimes it's directly for Walmart kinds of stuff, but a lot of times it's not. They have good cameras that cover the parking lot. Sometimes we get photos of federal when things are happening in front of Walmart, and, you know, that's just kind of become the new Main Street. Everyone sort of ends up at Walmart at some point. And so we need video of things. They have a great video system, but really only one person is the techno wizard who can figure it out. And so we call Shirley all the time and say, hey, Shirley, can you check and get us video of this incident or that incident? And she's Johnny on the spot. She brings her folks in, has trained them how to do it, and we get awesome service from Walmart to help us further our mission because of Shirley's direct actions and that of her staff. So we just want to publicly recognize her and say thank you for all you do for us, and we hope that we can continue that relationship into the future, so.
Thank you. It's really important that the citizens of Riverton help any way we can to support the things that are going on in the community. And this is a great opportunity, Chief, to recognize a couple of people that have helped out in the last year. The next item of business is the annual audit report presented to us by our auditors. And I'm hearing a little noise, sounds like we're dialing them up here, so. Now, the fun stuff is all over with, now it's the hard part. Now it's just hard work from here on out.
Good evening, Dennis, how are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good. You have the governing body of the city of Riverton listening to you telephonically.
Okay.
We wish you were here visually, but we understand that the roads are closed, or were.
Not very nice stuff right now.
No, no. So you have the floor, Mr. Chalker.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to speak out for people can't hear you, please let it go. We'll go through the audit. Pages one, two, and three is the independent auditor's report. Basically, this is an unmodified opinion. It's a clean report, it's the best you can have. It basically says you weren't preparing your financial statements, therefore, generally accepted accounting principles. As we go through the report, there'll be, I'll point out some things. There's a new accounting pronouncement, GASB 68, which relates to your pension and your unfunded pension liability, and I'll get on a few items with that. Those of you in the council who've seen the audit report in the past, you will notice the footnotes are a little longer. There's some new accounts on your balance sheets, and I'll point a couple of those things out as we go through, but that relates to our pension and our unfunded liability. Before I get started, I'd like to let the council know that we always have the full cooperation of your staff, and we really appreciate that. It allows us to come in, conduct the audit, do it efficiently, and get out without too much disruption of their daily routines. Your staff are well versed in the areas in which they're assigned. When we ask for work papers, they're given to us timely, and they're complete and accurate. And again, that's a good reflection on your staff. I'd just like to let everybody know that. Abby cannot be here this evening, she had another appointment, but we're a little behind on the presentation of the audit. A couple things, Abby had a baby during the course of the audit, and then GASB 68, the pension disclosure takes a little more time. That will improve going forward. But if we look on page 15, I'd like to just, under the liabilities, the last item under total, or total liability, the aggregate net pension liability. The retirement system is, the unfunded liability is about $1.27 billion. The city of Riverton's share of that liability is $4,101,000. That's basically, that's based on actuarial assumptions, based on current active employees that are participating in the retirement system, retirees, and what's being paid in and expected lives and the calculation they go through. But that $4 million is a remuneration, that is a liability. I have to say that your percentage is a small percentage compared to some of the municipalities that we have done so far. Their liabilities are considerably higher than what the city of Riverton's is. If you look up under deferred outflows, at your good deferred outflows on the right-hand side, you'll see that number, $929,000. That is money that was deposited to the retirement system after the calculation date, which is December for the retirement system. So about $4.1 million, the city has paid in $929,000 since that evaluation date, so that's a good, that's a good thing. So, well, that is new. On page, skip back to page 41, we had some debased debt. It goes back to, we had a loan on that. Investments were set aside to help pay for the retirement of those bonds, and the city was able to pay that loan off early, $1,135,000, which is a good thing. The fund did a little better than they were expected, and so that's a good thing. It'll save the city a considerable amount of interest by paying that off early. So that's a good thing. I think, actually, after it was paid off, there was like $6,800 left over for the city. So, again, that's a, that's a good thing. So that, oh, will go away in the future. Let's see. Oh, if we look on page 52, this is the budgetary comparison schedule for the general fund. And you can see under the expenditures that all departments were under their budget, again, which is a good reflection, not only on your department heads for keeping their departments in, but in, under the budget, but also with your accounting staff that also help monitor the day-to-day activities and make sure everybody's staying within their budget. That's a positive, positive thing. And then if we look on pages, there's a couple of audit reports that I'd like to point out to you. On page 65 and 66, as part of the audit, we're required to look at the city's internal controls over their accounting system and financial reporting, as well as to look at compliance with state and local law, just like the item. We look at things to make sure you're not in violation of any state statutes that you're doing basically what you're supposed to be doing as a municipality. And so on page 66, the first paragraph, we did not identify any deficiency in internal control that we consider to be a significant binding. The city has a good system of internal control, being that no one person can take a transaction from start to finish, not even Gloria or Courtney. There's good checks and balances along the way. So the system, it's doing what it intended to do under the compliance. The results of our tests disclosed no instances of non-compliance. That would be required to report, be reported under government auditing standards. Your staff take compliance, doing things right. They take that very seriously, it's not taken lightly, and that's reflected in these reports. The last report I'd like to point out to you is on page 68, 67 and 68. Since you receive so much in federal funding, we're also required to test internal controls over your federal grants and also to test compliance with the specific federal grants. And that's our opinion on the top of page 68, we're stating that the city of Riverton compliant in all material respects with those grant requirements. And then the last, second to the last paragraph, we did not identify any deficiencies in internal control, over compliance, that we would consider material weaknesses. Again, the staff take this very seriously. They make sure that things are being done properly and that no individual can take a transaction from start to finish. We have a lot of conversations throughout the year with special employee and Courtney. And they come across accounting issues or your disquestions, they call us, we're able to talk through the situation, make sure everybody's on the same page, that we're compliant with statutes, with federal grants, and that we're doing things properly, and that helps us kind of keep up with what's going on with the city of Riverton, and it kind of helps them keep on track. So when we come in to do the audit, we don't have any surprises, oh, we're likely to do this, or why aren't you compliant for that? We don't have those issues with the city. So, overall, again, this is a very clean report, there's no findings, so the council should be very proud of the financial statements, certainly that the staff have put together. We do not make many journal entries, the ones we make are usually getting the cash basis numbers, which you're all used to seeing, into an accrual basis, which are reflected in these reports. So what that tells you as the council is that as you're giving financial information on a monthly basis, that it's complete and accurate, and it can be relied on for the council to make management decisions. So with that, Courtney, if anyone has any questions, comments, certainly as the council, if any of you ever have questions of Abby or myself, please feel free to contact us. Gloria and Courtney have our email addresses and phone numbers. Please feel free to call us anytime that any of you have any questions. So with that, I think that the council, add any questions, or Courtney, if you have any questions.
This is, this is Mayor Baker. I just have one question about the GASB 68. Well, maybe it's more than one, maybe it's more than one question. So what's happened here is that, is that because the state of Wyoming has not fully funded the state retirement program, well, potentially, I guess, then what happens is now the city of Riverton has a liability for that?
Yeah, what hap, what's happened, and again, these are all actuarial functions provided by the actuaries that do the work for the retirement system, but based on the current level of funding and based on current active participants and retired participants, what's, basically, based on what's going in and what's coming out actuarially, yes, the retirement system does not have, currently have enough to meet those obligations under the current funding. And so based on contributions, how the state looks at that, the retirement then publishes a report that says, okay, you know, city of Riverton, city of Riverton, city of Shania, city of Casper, all of the municipalities that participate in the retirement system, here is your percentage of that liability. And so if, and it's not, certainly, don't take this wrong, it is not failing, it is not, it is performing very well, but if it were to close today, the $4 million would be a liability of the city of Riverton.
Thank you. Thank you, Courtney.
Yes, thank you, Courtney, and Gloria, and all your accounting staff.
So this is, this is a great report. Appreciate the effort that went into it, and...
Yeah, it's, pretty much, the effort comes from your staff. We come in, everything's ready to go, we can conduct the audit in an efficient manner and get out, and it's a clean, it's a clean audit, you should be proud.
Well, we are. Thank you. Anything you need to add, Courtney?
No, thank you, Dennis. It's been a pleasure working with your firm.
Thank you.
Again, if any of you ever have questions, please contact us. We're certainly glad to talk to council members one-on-one. And Courtney, if the council moves down the report, we'll take care of the filing and everything with the state, and then we'll take care of the data collection form that files the report with the federal spending house because of your federal grant.
Right. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Have a good evening.
You bet. Good night.
Good night.
Now, I, I look at this, I don't see where approval of this audit report is on the agenda for this evening. Is that correct?
Your Honor, actually, to have it handled appropriately, if you would accept the audit report, that would be a good motion.
Okay. I will, I would entertain a motion to accept the audit report.
Your Honor, I'll make the motion we accept the audit report.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded. All those in favor, is there any discussion? No discussion. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, accepted the audit report. Do we need to do any more on this? We're done. Okay. All right. All right. The next item of business is a museum presentation by Scott Getz.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for having me. I'm Scott Getz, I'm the central director for the Fremont County Museums. What you're about to get is just a little packet of goodies. Do an annual report for the county commission at the end of the fiscal year, that's in there from this past fiscal year. Copy of the newsletter that goes out every couple of months, letting folks know what's going on with the museums. And a partial schedule of our programming that'll be for the upcoming fiscal year. We're still working on some children's programs, so that's not in there, but the speakers programs and the trek programs are in your little packet. I'll try and be brief, and then you guys can ask me all the questions you want. Couple years ago, Fremont County Museums reorganized. They created my position, a central director position, so I'm in charge of all three county museums. We have seen what I would say are significant changes in the last two years. The programs that I spoke of, we created last year. We're fortunate to have some sponsors for those programs, the Winter Visitor Council, McDonald's, and Wyoming Community Bank. All three sponsors are on board again for this upcoming season. So between those three programs, there's in the neighborhood of 60, 65 programs that we put on at all three museums throughout the course of the year. Some of those are, the treks are in the summertime when the weather is a little bit better. You can get out and about and see what's going on outside the museum walls. The speakers and children's programs are, tend to be a bit more year-round, because we're not limited by weather to a degree on some of those. Very well received. People, the response to them has been very, very good. So we're real happy with how that's going, we'll continue that. The Wind River Mountaineer, we continue to publish that. We publish two issues a year, one in the spring and one in the fall. Like I said, the newsletter is new. A lot of new exhibit changes at the museums, all three of them. A lot of new exhibit changes at the museums, all three of them. We, all three museums do a lot of temporary exhibits with limited space and some facilities have different setups than others. Temporary exhibits are a really good fit for us, the Riverton Museum has just had two new temporary exhibits. The Riverton Museum is also working on some temporary exhibits for the Justice Center. We're working with county maintenance to put in some temporary exhibits. They'll stay six months or a year and then we'll rotate those out with some other photo exhibits. All three museums will contribute to those projects, but the Riverton Museum, because of the proximity, has kind of taken the lead on that for us. We have created a historic walking tour in all three communities. That's on the website, kind of self-explanatory, but it's a nice way to get folks out into the communities, put some focus on some businesses that are out there and attract more awareness, not only to the communities but to the museums, which is an important part of what we think we should be doing these days. We market quite a bit better, I would say. Visitation at all three museums has increased dramatically in the last two years. You can, and that's in that report for the last fiscal year, so far through six months and this fiscal year, we're up significantly at all three museums again. About nine percent in Riverton, or I mean Dubois, twenty-five percent in Landor, about thirty percent here in Riverton, because our visitations increased. That's important for a number of reasons. Obviously, we want to engage the public, we want to get folks through the door, not just, you know, folks from Fremont County, we want to attract visitors from outside of Fremont County. We have what I think is a responsibility to contribute to the economic well-being of the communities that we're in. And so doing a better job of marketing, having better exhibits, having programs that visitors want to see, attracts visitors to our communities, they spend their dollars here and that's good for, that's good for us. That's probably the chamber director in me coming out, over eight and a half years of doing that in Landor. That's really important, something that the museums can add significantly to is tourism. There are important parts of that. So everything's going really good, actually, except the budget, just like everybody else. We have two different types of budgets, we have a general fund budget that comes from tax-generated revenue and we have what's called self-generated budgets. Self-generated budgets are money that we get through gift shop sales and donations. The sponsorship program feeds into that self-generated budget. Last year, the self-generated budgets took on more of our... More expenses than they have in the past because we knew that the budget was going to be getting tighter as far as general fund goes. The general fund really effectively at this point covers our fixed costs, salaries and a few contractual services. Outside of that, everything else is funded through self-generated budgets that the museum have. So we're going to be working harder on increasing the visitation, continuing to do that because that means better sales in the store, that means more donations. We'll be looking to figure out how to try and increase the donations, try and develop our sponsorship program more and those kinds of things, help offset some of the budget issues that we'll see from the other side of the ledger. But I think we've created, or the last two years, I think all three communities have museums that they can be proud of for different reasons. You know, a lot of it is working with what you have and the situation you have, with the facility you have and not all museums are created equal in that regard. But it's important to, you know, serve the public in your community and try and take advantage of what you do have to offer and tell people about it. We do want people to come to the museums. Perhaps in the past, I think it was, that was an afterthought maybe, trying to get people through the door. It's not currently the way it is. We want people to come and see us, we want to show people what we're like and what we can do, so. I'm very proud of the staff, I think we have really good staff at all three. I would say extremely dedicated, you know, a willingness to learn. They've seen a lot of change in the last two years, so I'd have to commend them on their, the way they've embraced the change. Things are going really well, so I'm happy. Questions?
Mr. Larson?
I noticed the activities at the different museums. And my question is, are these walking activities or are they like the geology of Dubois area, Ring Lake Ranch Tour, Wild Horse Sanctuary Trek at Landor, or the Hudson Gold Mine and Cemetery Tour? How are those accommodating?
We, in Riverton and Landor, we worked with the Wind River Transportation Authority to provide service. We have a contract with them to go on for the treks that we do. JB Okie Mansion, Hudson is one. In Dubois, it was prohibitive with the Wind River Transportation Authority because they don't generally have buses up there, so we worked with the senior center. Have a contract with them to use their fifteen-passenger van to take those treks out and about. And then you call the museum to reserve. On our treks, they're limited, the number of people we can handle, not only by potentially the size of the bus, but also where we go visit. There are some places we visit, we can't take forty people, you know, we can take twelve because that's the number that we can accommodate. The Okie Mansion is a good example of that. It was, we knew it would be popular, it's incredibly popular. Everybody and their brother wants to go, we had people from South Dakota calling us to go last year. So we have two on the schedule for this year, but we're still limited in the number of people we can handle because, you know, the interior of the mansion is just not that big, so you have to reserve your spot on a trek. So they're going fast, if you want to get on one, you better go, you better call the museum.
Holly?
My mom's got Dr. Jules' buggy over in Landor that she has long-term lease with you guys and you guys have been amazing making sure that nobody's climbing on it and you guys have crates put around it, do you know the buggy I'm talking about, kind of?
Who's your mom?
Sandy Hayes.
Okay.
And whenever we come over, your staff is always amazing, willing to let us see it just to kind of check up on it because that's kind of her little baby. But you guys have been absolutely amazing with it, so you guys have done a great job.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Scott, for coming and talking to us.
Thanks for having me.
You bet. The next item of business is the Cliff View Lift Station Bid Award. Public Works Directors Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor. The item before you is the replacement of an existing water lift station off of Smith Road near the Cliff View Mobile Home Park. This lift station in particular has provided a lot of maintenance issue for the city of Riverton over the last few years. In 2014, the lift station pumps went out, we're not, and we were not able to replace them. And in fact, it has required collection and distribution staff to go weekly to pump out the station. We've had several electrical problems that we've tried to diagnose and solve over the last few years but have had no luck. Therefore, when we went through our capital projects in this budget process, we decided that it would be in the best interest of the city to replace this lift station. Staff put together plans and specifications for this Cliff View Lift Station replacement project. The project was advertised for bid on January 12th and 17th of 2016. Ten contractors attended the mandatory pre-bid meeting and bids were received and opened on January 27th, 2016 with the following results. We do want to thank the Administrative Service Department for helping us with that opening. The results were LCI Trucking and Construction of Pavilion Wyoming at $135,600, Seventy-one Construction of Riverton Wyoming at $110,171, Jerry Bornhop Construction of Riverton Wyoming at $129,618, Viper Underground of Riverton Wyoming at $179,000, Dale Weaver Wyoming of Powell Wyoming at $136,800, and finally, Western Municipal Construction of Matizzi Wyoming at $160,000. Staff reviewed the bid results to assure that each bid was responsive to specification and bid requirements. After doing so, staff recommends the city council award the bid to Seventy-one Construction of Riverton Wyoming in the amount of $110,171. As far as budget impact, I do want to clarify a little bit of what has been written in your packet. We do have the funds to cover this project, however, we did not sufficiently budget in the line item for this project. We budgeted seventy-five thousand, we missed it, we under-budgeted it. And so in order to accomplish this project, we will take approximately $35,000 from our miscellaneous wastewater line item. That line item was put in our budget at $150,000 to help us replace Orangeburg and other areas of emergency repairs for our wastewater system. So in order to make this project viable, from a budgetary standpoint, we will use the seventy-five thousand that was originally budgeted in the line item and then take approximately $35,000 from the miscellaneous wastewater line item from the capital project. This project will most likely be completed this fiscal year, however, in your staff report, we did list that it could span between two fiscal years. My estimate is that we will probably complete the entire project this fiscal year, but there could be some payouts that bleed into the next fiscal year, primarily the warranty payment. There is a bit of a lead time on ordering the parts for this lift station and that's why there's a potential for it to bleed into next fiscal year. Thank you.
Thank you, any questions? Do we have any idea when they're going to get started on it or?
Your honor, as soon as we award the contract, we'll allow the contractor to then order the necessary parts for the lift station. We think there's probably a four to six week lead time on some of these parts and that's what we're expecting at this time.
Couple of months away then, thank you. The chair would entertain a motion to award the lift station replacement to Seventy-one Construction, $110,171.
Your honor, I would move that we approve the Cliff View Lift Station replacement project and award it to Seventy-one Construction.
Seconded.
Been moved and seconded, are there, is there any discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, motion passes. Disclosure Statements. City Clerk's Report.
I'll do it, your honor.
You're going to do it, okay?
So I'll hand these out, this is pursuant to Wyoming Statute 6, Test 5, 118A. Basically, you just have to fill it out to state the funds that the city may be invested in, the same ones that you may invest in. So you just have to disclose which bank that you bank with. And so if it's Central Bank and Trust, First Interstate, US Bank or Wells Fargo, so those four, you either check yes or no in each of the box, sign it, date it, and then we've got to have them turn back in and then we have to read them saying that we've gotten them back in the records, so it goes in the minutes. So I'll hand them out right now.
What's the address here, 816?
So we'll just make the minutes reflect that we've received financial disclosure statements from Kyle Larson, Lee Martinez, Martin Canaan, Michael Bailey, John Baker, Ollie Gibbon, Kay Sean Peterson, and Courtney Bowlander, Stephen Weaver, and Gloria Hardman.
Does it require any kind of a motion? Okay, all right. The next item of business is Resolution Number 1331, the 2016 Legislative Budget Session WHAM Support Resolution, which is something that we, you know, kind of tagged on to this. Do we have a copy of that in front of us here someplace, I think, or do I just have it?
Yeah, I think you've got one, Mayor, and I think we sent one out, it's very similar to this.
Okay.
Basically, WHAM sent this out late Friday and asked that each municipality adopt this resolution. And basically, once we adopt it, then we're going to give it to legislators that are within our area. If you look at the resolution, it's really fairly vague, there's not really specific things they're asking for. If anything, it provides a little bit of background on how cities rely on funding from the state to provide vital services to our community. And so I didn't see anything in there that stands out that's really against anything that I believe in, therefore I would recommend adoption of Resolution 1331.
Thank you, the chair would entertain a motion to adopt Resolution 1331.
Your honor, make a motion that we adopt Resolution 1331.
Seconded.
Is there any discussion? Y'all had a chance to see it, I guess, on the email.
There's only a page.
One page, yeah.
It's not 231.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, all right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mayor votes aye, motion passes. Council Committee Reports and Council Member Roundtable, Ms. Gibbon?
This morning, we had a very productive endowment meeting and we had the senior board there and then the endowment board, of course, and then onlookers. We paid the invoices per the current agreement that we have and we discussed the actual agreement that we have in great detail. And then they are going to talk to their attorney, John Vincent, about the new agreement that we've given them. And so our next endowment meeting is going to be March 15th at the Senior Center at 10 o'clock.
Okay. Mr. Peterson?
Nothing, your honor.
Mr. Larson?
Nothing, your honor.
Mr. Martino?
I don't have anything today, your honor.
Mr. Canaan?
Sir, I went to the PAWS Board a couple of weeks ago and they had their end-of-year report. So just to give you a quick idea as to what a good job they do for the city. For example, they had five hundred and seventy-six dogs come into the shelter and five hundred and sixty-one go back out, either returned to their owners or adopted. Same thing for the cats, three hundred and fifty-five coming in and three hundred and fifty-nine going out. Had a mom in there. But again, just shows you what a, what a good job they do for the city that... Taking care of the stray animals and returning those back to their owners or getting adoptions.
Thank you. Mr. Bailey?
I have nothing this week.
Nothing? Mr. Wilson? Mr. Weaver?
Well, we have a packed agenda for our next, uh, work session this next Tuesday. Three items. We'll be talking about, uh, the Veterans MOU. Um, we're going to be talking about zoning, so I'm going to give a, a brief overview on zoning, and then we're going to have, um, uh, Howard Johnson, he's going to pinch-hit for that and talk about his experience on the planning commission and, and the purposes of zoning. And then we have a presentation from Fremont County Coalition about the smoking ordinance, um, about upping some of the fees on that for underage, um, smoking. So those are the three things we'll be talking about on next Tuesday. And I believe we have another, I don't have the dates in front of my mind. The community dialogue is, you remember exactly the date on that?
February eleventh.
Okay.
Fort Waschke.
Yeah, so it's Thursday, Thursday night. Uh, I guess it's my turn, and, uh... I guess I don't have, I guess I don't have anything to add over what we've already talked about tonight. Um, so I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, your honor.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Well...